And with that, let's begin with the color guard. We are here, it's the January 14th board meeting for the school district management county. And the colors will be presented this evening by Braden River High School, JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Right, face. All right, march.
Thank you. And I'd like to take a minute to thank the command sergeant Alex Figueroa and members Clark Luttrell, Sheila Swanson, Justin Ferroz, and Elena Andrew. And before your recognitions, I'd like to just begin with my welcome. As Chair of the School Board, it is my privilege to welcome you to this meeting of the School Board of Manatee County. Your presence and participation are an essential element and valuable part of the School Board meetings, workshops, and public hearings. To assist the School Board in conducting the public's business in an orderly manner, we ask that you please adhere to the following School Board meeting protocols. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices, oh, that goes for the board members up here too, entering the School Board chamber. Please respect your fellow citizens and the School Board by keeping your conversation to a quiet minimum during the meeting. Please note that the capacity for attendance at School Board meetings is limited to the 75 seats inside the School Board chamber. In addition, there is a section in the back right-hand corner for wheelchair access and medically necessitated standing. Please refrain from clapping, booing, speaking out from the audience, or engaging in any other behavior that is disruptive to the business at hand. And again, thank you all for being here and your presence and for following our above protocols. And with that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Barber, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Member Superintendent Saunders, Deputy Superintendent Zoradiosa is coming down. And we have a special new program that's been introduced into our school district that she will tell you more about, but just want to say that just like so many things with our school district, we've gone after it in a big way and seen some real success. So I'll let you take it from there.
Appreciate that, thank you. Good evening, Chair, Messenger, Board Members, as well as Superintendent Saunders. It is my distinct pleasure to stand before you this evening as we focus on our blue ribbon schools. Approximately one year ago, Superintendent Saunders extended an invitation to our schools, the administrators, the principals, to ascertain whether or not they wanted to participate in seeking status as a blue ribbon school. Every year, the United States Department of Education does indeed attempt to identify schools who are, have excellence in education, American schools, with excellence in education. They are trying to determine whether or not we can achieve high standards, and they want the participation of all of the participants at the school, the total school community, meaning not only the students, but educators, families, and community in creating safe as well as welcoming schools where students master challenging content. So to achieve blue ribbon status, schools are evaluated in several areas. They include student focus and support, school organization and culture, challenging standards in curriculum, active teaching and learning, technology integration, professional community, leadership and educational vitality, school, family, and community partnerships, as well as indicators of success. There are 121 indicators of success, and our schools to reach the highest standard of lighthouse must master 80 percent, a minimum of 80 percent of the standards to be recognized. We have seven schools within Manatee County who accepted the challenge from Superintendent Saunders, and at this time, we would like to recognize them at their various levels. They were recognized in December in Orlando at Disney, and the leaders of the blue ribbon schools, those who had come to Manatee County truly bragged about the abilities of our administrators, their leadership teams, and the schools in general. So let's begin by recognizing our schools at the points of light. This means they have attempted to master the 121 indicators, and they are striving for success. In alphabetical order, I'll begin with Bishaw Elementary School, Mr. Mario Mendoza. And you'll see that he has a crystal award. Many of our schools received those in December. Followed by Braden River Middle School, Principal Kim Zanoff.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here and thank you for the opportunity. With me tonight, I have my Assistant Principals Kristen Cunningham and Brad Baieto.
From Lee Middle School, Mr. Scott Cooper.
Thank you very much, and tonight also I have with me my Assistant Principals, Dr. Tamara Cornwell and Mr. Terrence Marshall.
And our final point of light school is Palmetto Elementary School. We have with us Frank Pistello, Acting Principal at the site at this time.
Thank you. Proud to introduce Melissa Porco, the Assistant Principal for Palmetto Elementary, and Dr. Erin Wheat, School Support Specialist.
We have two beacon schools. That means that they are just shy of reaching the coveted lighthouse award. And those two schools are Hale Middle School, Principal Kate Marlaugh, as well as Terra Elementary School, Principal Laura Campbell.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity, we really enjoyed the process, and with me today is our Assistant Principal Karen Chanel.
And the creme de la creme award is the lighthouse award, and we have a single school that has reached that status this year. We are exceptionally proud of Williams Elementary School, Connie Dixon, Principal.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, thank you so much for allowing us to have this opportunity to participate in this process. It truly is one of the best school improvement processes I've ever seen in my 30 years of education. I'm delighted to share and introduce with you, to you, my partner and my teammate, my Assistant Principal Sheila Wade.
Ladies, before you turn around, perhaps you could display the awards that you received. We have a personalized lighthouse with the school's name on it, and then the school has gathered and taken a photo of everyone out in the courtyard, and so we're really proud of Williams, along with our other schools that are going to rise to greater heights next year.
If I'm standing, I'm fine, I can see over Scott. I just want to make it easier. It's all good. Alright, ready? Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, School Board can sit down. But before you guys leave, I'd like to do one thing. The Superintendent has made clear that we are only through the first semester of the school year, and we've been off to a great start. But, we've got half a year to go, and we want to finish well. So what happened was, on the first day that our students returned for the second semester, our very talented professionals from Manatee Schools Television went out and took some video, and we'd like to show you that video right now. Let's have it.
Welcome back! Hi, welcome back! Good morning, welcome back!
It's an exciting time seeing them come back, they're happy to be here, they run up and give you hugs, it's one of my favorite times of the year.
Welcome back, you have a good New Year's? Yeah, good Christmas?
Sometimes I get teary-eyed because I love them, and I've been with them, been here for four years, going on five, so it's nice to see them come off the bus excited about the day.
I'm just hoping that the second half of the year is productive, and we keep it fun and keep our success happening.
Good morning! It's great to see our friends, isn't it? It's an exciting year. We want them to return, them meaning students and staff, all of us to return with a positive attitude and the same type of enthusiasm that we had on day one in August. It's refreshing to see students return, they've been very pleasant and eager to see their friends.
First day back after break, you know, really excited to talk to the kids, see what they did, you know, what kind of fun they had.
Hopefully they enjoy their break, it's time to hit the ground running, you know, second semester always flies by, it'll be over before you know it.
I really want everybody to give a final push, you know, like we're going to end this on a good note, and we're going to have a great semester, everybody's going to do well, show what you've learned the previous semester, bring those things with you.
This is the final half of our school year, so we really have to focus on the academics as well as generate a welcoming environment so that we address the social, emotional, learning needs as well.
Actually, very proud of them, they took their test right before they left, very good results, looking forward to a strong finish this year.
Okay, we're going to move on. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda Amendments on January 14th, 2020, Agenda updated January 14th, 2020, and posted to the school district website, www-manateeschools.net. Is there a motion?
No motion. Second.
Okay, I don't see anybody using their, there's no motion up there. Alright, so voice vote. Dr. Hope's has motioned, Vice Chair Kennedy has seconded it. It was a tie. There is no button, so, oh, look at that, boom. Mr. Kennedy, can you, thank you so much. Is there any discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. 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 All those opposed? Mr. Minor, did you vote? Thank you, alright. Move on to approval of the minutes. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of minutes from December 10th, 2019 workshop and regular meeting and public hearing.
So we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for January 14th, 2020.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second, and we do have a public comment.
And a second. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Alright, thanks very much. We have one, two, three, four speakers for consent. Liv Coleman, you're up first.
Alright, I'm here to speak on, I think it's item number 11 of the consent agenda, the proposal to reduce minimum qualifications for substitute teachers in Manatee County. I'm a tenured college professor of political science and department chair in Tampa with a doctoral degree, but I live in Manatee County and voted to approve the school referendum two years ago. My mother's also a public, was a public high school, junior high school teacher, my father taught at a university, my husband teaches at a college nearby in Sarasota. So education's not just my profession, it's like a whole way of life. Speaking as an educator, taxpayer, and citizen of this county, I strongly oppose the proposal to allow individuals who have only a high school diploma or GED to be substitute teachers in Manatee County schools. When I voted to approve the school referendum, I expected the school district to improve the quality of instruction in Manatee County schools, not to lower it. In higher education, our regional accrediting body, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, SACS, would never allow us to do something like this, to across the board lower credentialing standards for classroom teachers. Every higher education college course requires someone with ideally a doctorate, or at least a master's degree in the exact field of specialization, or a detailed explanation of why alternative credentials such as a JD are appropriate for teaching a given course. We can't just put people willy-nilly into courses, we have to have reasons for why we do what we do. By the same token, substitute teachers are teachers, they're not babysitters. Substitute teachers are teachers. They're responsible for engaging students according to lesson plans, managing classroom dynamics and discipline, making sure they don't lose a day of learning while their regular teachers away. They can sometimes serve for a month at a time. Unfortunately, this proposal suggests that substitute teachers with a high school diploma or GED could be paid below even the poverty level wages that substitute teachers with bachelor's degrees receive in this district. And that means that the proposal creates incentives for principals to hire lower-cost employees who are less credentialed, especially for long-term substitute teaching positions which can last months at a time. I've no doubt you're working under the constraints of labor shortage, but it's precisely the undercutting of the profession of education that's deterring young people to become teachers these days. Among college students I know, I know hardly anyone in the social sciences who want to become K-12 teachers. I suspect there may not even be a teacher shortage in this area at all, there are many excellent experienced teachers who are retired in this area. If the school district paid them a good wage and good working conditions, I suspect you might be able to entice some of them to come teach on a part-time basis. I have a friend who's a substitute teacher in the Boston area, he makes about double the hourly rate that's paid here. Finally, if we'd stop spending a lot of money on troubled software systems, litigation, we might be able to find the money to hire professional teachers and pay them what they're worth. Every child deserves a highly qualified teacher who can earn a living wage, and with the successful school referendum in place, and more money that might be coming from the state legislature, it's time to start working toward that goal now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Mendel? Are you here? I don't see her. Alright, Mr. Gibilina? Welcome back, as always.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Saunders, I've got five minutes, right?
You have three, unfortunately.
What happened to my five minutes?
Five minutes is for a group, and you have to sign up, register as the group.
I am on file in perpetuity, signed by five people of my homeowners association. So I'm not going to go out and knock on doors every other week and get advice.
We can get it straightened out, it's fine. Board Members, do you have any problem with Mr. Gibilina? He's got two items he would like to address.
Thank you. So, the, and then I've got a comment card for future agenda items. So on the consent, on the December 10th consent agenda item, I just find this disturbing that you approved the alternative student transportation services of $2.6 million for 50 students. Doug and I had talked about this, and hopefully we can work on that down the road. But how do you justify $2.6 million to drive a kid to work? A glorified Uber driver, we're paying them $1,400 a week, more than our certified teachers? These guys just have a driver's license? I don't get it. And then you outsourced it. So I went to SunBiz, and I looked up the corporate name. The LAC doesn't even exist with SunBiz, so I can't figure that out. The other one, Secure Transport Co-op Corporation, there's five of them. Two are out of business, one is incognito, and two are active, and they've only been active since January, so I think if you're going to vet these contractors, you need to vet them a little better, and at least, at least as the public trying to backtrack this stuff and do a little research on these companies, you ought to tell me at least what corporation it is. Very disturbing, I think that, that needs to be thrown in-house. I think that $2.6 million can go to the bus drivers and say, you know what, we got two kids from this school, take the bus driver, give them that extra 200 a day, or somebody from the cafeteria. We should not be outsourcing $2.6 million. So hopefully we can work on that. Very, very confusing contract, I didn't understand it, and I certainly don't want my $2.6 million going out of state. The other one, again, it goes back to accountability and transparency. Number nine, human services. Now, if I had an overhead projector, I'd set it right there, and we would all look at it, but we don't. So, I'm just going to take the first three. Villas, Clemson, Michael Friday, and Tracy Moore. So, two of them already got their checks. And again, as trying to research their pay, it's a range from...
Gibilina, hang on one second, are you discussing current district employees?
Number nine, current agenda, current, current agenda item.
Could you just do me a favor and just leave names out? Because we have a, we have a rule in our bylaws about discussing individual employees.
Well, it's on the website, okay, alright.
It's just a public comment.
Got it, okay, so, my point is, you have a range here from $59,000 to $100,000 for the first one, the second one, which is again, $50,000 to $82,000, the third one, $74,000 to $116,000. So I don't, I don't get it, if, if, can you tell me exactly what they get paid? What is the sliding scale? I mean, if I was a private corporation, I said I've got three employees I want to give a raise to, well, what are you paying them? Oh, at least $185,000, but maybe 300. That's crazy. The public should know exactly what we're paying these three individuals, and it's not there, it's a sliding scale. So if you can bring some clarity to that for me, I would appreciate it. The third one is number 13, again, executive summary, three of the board members will be traveling to Tallahassee. What three? It's not on there. Who's going? One, two? Two. So the third one, we don't know yet, right? Okay. Again, there needs to be some clarity, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to get some clarity and answers on the agenda that it should be for the public, easily read by the common person that pays taxes and votes. So, up to 3,600 bucks, it's 400 bucks a day, unless Mr. Hope's is chartering your private airplane, I don't, I don't see where we're spending 400 bucks per person for three days. Even the Hyatt is only a buck and a half a night. I don't know what you're doing with the other 250, you can't drink, you can't bribe the officials, so where's the money going? I don't get it. So, hopefully there's some accountability, you know, I don't think you can carpool because that'd be a violation of sunshine laws, right? So now, let's just take three separate cars up there and pay the per diem on that. Any event, I won't use the names no more, it is part of the public policy. And that's it, thank you for giving me the five minutes, I appreciate it, and I do have future agenda items, I don't know when you're going to call that, but...
Glenn, we actually don't have a, like the county commission has a, we don't have an agenda item for future, so, you want to throw it in real quick now?
Yeah, I will. So, again, real simple, overhead projector, I would like this board to instruct Ms. Saunders to get an overhead projector in here, just like the city of Bradenton or the county commissioners. Renewable energy project, a policy, that's it. Okay, and hats off to Mr. Kennedy, he's on the Bradenton Housing Affordable Board, and we'll see you tomorrow morning. Thank you.
That's news to me.
Well, you're news, you're news, you're the board.
Wow, thanks for, thanks for notifying me, I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Alright, 9:00.
I really had no idea. Okay, Mr. Huggins? Let me, I'm just still going through the list. Pastor Huggins, are you, I thought I saw him.
He's on his way.
I mean, I thought I saw him in the room earlier. No, okay. Board Members, Mrs. Mendel's name was called, but she came in late, and I'd rather err on the side of public comment and allow her to come up and, yeah, come on up.
Is there a consent agenda?
It is consent. It's HR.
A 21-year-old high school diploma or equivalent can sub now, tonight if you pass that. This is why I voted for the referendum? This is what you're doing with my taxpayers? Degrading the quality of instruction in our classrooms by approving adjunct instructional staff with no degree in education, and no Florida certification was bad enough, but now this. By downgrading the qualification of the very people we put on the front lines, you degrade the quality of instruction provided to our children. Is this how you think, Dr. Hope, that we're going to become a world-class public school district, the number one in the state? Is this what the governor sent you here to do for us? Shame on you all. From teacher.org, to be considered a sub, one should have a bachelor's degree at a minimum. Usually, the bachelor's degree can be in any, any, any area or subject. The education requirements for substitute teaching differ than those of a licensed teacher, but, because the substitute teachers are not required to complete an education degree, a basic requirement for a substitute teacher is a bachelor's degree. Here are comments from sane people on social media. It's called supply and demand. If you can't find competent people to do the job, lower the bar? Our children are important, are too important to treat, be treated this way and not to have well-educated instructors. Treat the substitute better, welcome them, support them when students are misbehaving, you may even need to pay them more. Somebody else says, or could it be that some qualified people have applied and get crickets back? I have a master's and have subbed in several different states, I filled out all the forms and never heard back. I called and emailed several times to see if I had somehow made a mistake with my application and never heard back. Add to that how much you have to pay, $150 to get the fingerprints, you have to work two days to get that back, it's a wonder no competent people are applying. Stop charging people $150 for fingerprints before they're even hired? That's outright profiteering from the very people you need the most. They have to work two full days to get that money back. Increase the salary. You're trying to cover classrooms on the cheap, just like you're trying to secure our schools and fill our full-time instructional positions on the cheap. Stop the robo-calls from going out in the mornings to the cheapest, lowest-paid, lowest-qualified subs on the totem pole to save a buck. Have you seen some of the wonky subs we get already? I have. I work... I work for the county and I've seen them. You don't need to make things worse. What you do need to do, Dr. Hopes, is to increase the pay, plain and simple. I can only imagine the lawsuits we will have to fund against a district when a 21-year-old with a high school diploma or GED is covering a classroom and screws up because they don't have the maturity or the proper training to educate children. Subbing is not babysitting. Your move with the adjunct instructional staff made it clear to the public that you think teaching is babysitting, but this is even worse. Contrary to popular opinion, with the right pay and qualifications, we can hire people that will make sure kids are learning.
Thank you. All right, one more call for Pastor Huggins? In case he's outside? There, I'm sure, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. We've had a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Let's move on to new business. I'm sorry, public comment is later on in the agenda. New business, item number one. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for November 2019.
So move.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second for the November 2019 budget amendments. Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And, Madam Superintendent, approval of the year-to-date financial statements through November 30th, 2019, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the year-to-date financial statements through November 2019.
So move.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion, and I'm looking for a second?
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
No. No more until public comment.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Dr. Hopes?
Thank you, just a point of clarification. The, the audit committee met yesterday, and there was some discussion about a relatively small amount of funds that had not been reconciled because you needed the detail on it. Is that noted anywhere in the, the budget summary for November?
No, it, that, the amount that the audit committee was referring to was for the prior year.
The prior fiscal year, okay. So this, so there, there, there need be no notations in this summary with regards to a similar occurrence?
There is a similar occurrence. We are awaiting a detailed report, so if, we would be able to go ahead and add that as a notation, if you would like.
I, I would like that, just so when, when we get that report out of the system, then we can just amend it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, you're requesting that as an amendment to this document before us?
Yeah, if, I'll approve it with the understanding that there'll be a notation with regards to the information that's yet to be generated for the reconciliation.
Would you like that added to November, or would you like that going forward?
Whenever it's appropriate, if, if that could go on the statement, and then, once that has been reconciled, if you would bring it back to the board to amend, so that we have accurate statements moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And to add to that, I appreciate you adding that. When I met with the superintendent, one of the things that I asked her to do was to add reconciliation information on here, moving forward.
Perfect.
We had done that in the past when we had some hiccups, and I asked for that to be re-added also, so I 100% agree with you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. On my paper agenda, I don't have anything additional, but on the computer, there's two things that popped up, which is something funky with the software. Okay, cool. Then I will pass the gavel over to Vice Chair Kennedy for public comment.
I don't need to gab on anything. All right, folks, we're all familiar with the rules of public comment, so I will skip the speech, but please keep them in mind, especially just a reminder, any discussion of individual school district employees is off limits during public comments. If you have a concern with an individual district employee, please bring it to the superintendent, offline, outside of a public school board meeting, please. And as always, please be respectful, and we all know how to handle it. Mr. Nelson, you're first up, please.
Madam Chair, and board members and staff, I'm back here tonight with no handouts. I've wasted enough time giving you people paperwork on the budget, and this particular item, you authorized the last five years, and on December 10th, I gave you all the documentation to do that. And I called the $250 million live, because you never did it. Now ironically, as the order of the meeting goes tonight, you just approved this, combined statement of revenues and expenditures through November. Do you know that, that really tells you the truth and says you actually lied? You lied? Transfers give you no revenue. And what do you do? Look on the page, through November, there's a tone of $20,000 of a transfer. The transfer's in and out, and it's not counted. It generates no revenue. You're starting a new budget cycle now, and I would hope the lies would stop. I begin to wonder, if you're going to lie about $250 million, what else do you lie about? Because I've been doing this for five years, giving you rings of paper, and you still do it again. Let's hope not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Morse. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Different circumstances. Let me grab some posters in the back to share. I apologize, when I was writing my notes, I didn't realize there had been a leadership change, so Madam Chair, instead of Mr. Chairman, I made a correction on the notes there. I'm here to talk about some of the good that's going on in our community. We, I'm a, a, a board member for Junior Leadership Manatee, and it's a group of about 40 kids from high schools all over the county, and they get together in this program, and it's a year-long program that began in September, and they'll graduate this coming April. And we take them all over the county, and we expose them to the challenges and the opportunities that are happening in our county. So we take them to a lot of the places. This is a poster of them at Blake Medical Center. They actually went into one of the operating rooms, and I'll show you a picture of that shortly. This is at the Meals on Wheels Food Bank, all right? This is the, the kids at the Salvation Army. This is our group at the Pace Domestic Violence Center. Here are the kids in their scrubs at the operating room, so we get a chance to really see what it's like in medical services. We took them to the jail, the Manteen County Jail, they toured it, they toured the courthouse as well, and one of the judges spent some time with us. And then there was also fun team building. You know, these are kids from rival high schools, and they all get together through this program, and they learn how to work together. So it's a wonderful program, and it exposes them to some of the real needs in our community, and the importance of service. And many of these kids, for the first time, really meet some people and see some people that are far less fortunate than they are. So it's, it's teaching them empathy, thoughtfulness, compassion, and those are all important characteristics for young people to be good citizens, and also to be fulfilled and happy in their own lives and careers. So the reason I'm here tonight, in front of you, is these children volunteer to spend six and a half days in our program, and these are days that include a Saturday, they're all vacation or teacher record days. These are days that their classmates can be at the beach, can be fishing, going to see a movie, and they volunteer to give these days up. They make that sacrifice to improve themselves, and through their understanding, help us build a better community. So, students have to accrue community service hours to qualify for Bright Future scholarships. And so, we believe that future, that Junior Leadership Manatee qualifies under the guidelines of the Florida statutes as a supervised service learning program, and based on the number of days that they attended, if they attend every day, they should be eligible for up to 33 hours of community service over the entire year-long program. And that's about a third of what you need at the highest level for Bright Future Scholarship. And since our program caters to every high school in the community, we thought it was best to approach the school board rather than each individual guidance department. And so, you can see my request down there, just humbly, we request that you consider making a, a policy statement on that.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Is, he may or may not be registered as an organization, but isn't he speaking on behalf of an organization?
Junior Leadership Manatee, I guess, yes, sure.
Right.
I just wanted to let you finish your thought, so...
I'd like for him to have the additional, the two minutes, that we, we give five minutes for organizations, so that you don't rush and that we, that we hear. Is that, is that all right?
I, I really, I appreciate that. The packets that you have there in front of you include these very same pictures, as well as the brochure from our program. You know, again, it's about the kids, is the reason that, that I'm here, it's the reason we're all here, and we just feel like this is, this is just a wonderful, it's a diverse group, a cross-section of our community, and they're giving their own free time, and we just don't feel, we feel like there should be recognition of that, and I think it, it, I'm surprised we haven't asked you in the past, but, but we're making that ask tonight. So my, my request is that you, you, we humbly request the board consider approving Junior Leadership Manatee Program as a sponsor, as sponsored by the Manatee County Chamber of Commerce, to qualify for community service hours for applicable students within the district. We also request this be made retroactive to the commencement of the program for the current school year, and our first orientation day was September 21st. And that concludes my comments. And I appreciate the courtesy of, of some extra time, Reverend Golden, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. If you want to leave the photos with us, or if you have another...
I'd be happy...
If you have a plan for them, you can take them, but we'll be happy to keep them here.
I'd be, I'd be happy to leave them here, and we appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morse. Mrs. Mendel, public comment?
First off, I was, I was kind of saddened that many more of you didn't attend the rally and tally for our teachers. This was a sign I carry proudly, and we need to have school board members that are willing to push back harder against the state to provide greater funding for public education in Florida. We need to, just in case. We need to have more signs that look like this, if we don't start taking care of our kids and our teachers. In the meantime, I did do a public records request that was finally granted. I did find out that in regard to one law firm, Johnson Jackson, in regard to legal fees for the superintendent, the month of September 25th, four days in September, we had legal fees in a total of $2,895. That's 2017. October 30th through the 31st, two days, we, we had, or no, that's the long, the, the, October, anyway, October, the total, fees in October for the month was $19,821, were legal fees that we covered for the superintendent. And the month of November, for only a handful of days, there was $1,000, $1,011.96 that we paid out, and, October was a very busy month. That was the, that was the month we had $10,000. And the, the rest are, all these were redacted, okay? So apparently there's anywhere from 300 to 500 invoices that I, I will have the ability to go through after, of course, I pay a fee of $527.04. So I, I'm offering to reduce the fee and go in and, and look at the invoices myself, you don't have to copy them, let me see them, but that's just in 2017, shortly after the investigation started. Clearly, that didn't work out well. The settlement was not passed by the Education Practices Committee, and now you have us footing the bill for a second settlement. So we, as taxpayers, need to know exactly what we're being charged to cover fraudulent and corruption, and, and it, it's clear. And, and I read every, every meeting from the education prac, from the case report. It's 148 pages long, we in our group read from it as well, it's all substantiated, there is court testimony from employees, et cetera. The fraud was substantiated. And when we went to the Education Practices Commission, they asked very clearly when they turned it down, why would Manatee hire a superintendent with this kind of background when they knew all of this already? In addition, they asked that the settlement fee be much, or the fees be much higher, and that her license be revoked, yet you're putting on our backs a second round, and it's got to stop.
Vice Chair, just one question. Ms. Mendel, your badge, is that a campaign badge for your school board race?
Yeah. School Board candidate is always wearing them.
Well, no, I think it's law that you're not allowed to wear campaign materials in school board meetings or on school property.
Any type of political speech, which would include t-shirts?
Just to let you know.
My t-shirt, have you worn this before?
No, no, I'm just saying, for example, a t-shirt says, please vote for...
And your badge that you're a candidate, you need to take that off. You can wear your name, but not related to your school board campaign.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Phelps? Yes, Ms. Mendel.
My supporters couldn't wear my shirt after the election. Good evening.
Good evening.
First and foremost, if we're going to talk about not wearing pins, an attorney saw that Dave Minor wears an NRA pin. Can we make sure we, he not wears that? Okay? An attorney pointed that out, I don't care. That's what I wanted to say during that time. Also, on July 16th, according to your minutes, you had already hired Ronnie King as the interim principal at Lincoln Memorial Academy. The date on that, it says new hires or transfers, it says he moved from O'Nico and is now the principal of Lincoln Memorial Academy. However, the district did not take over Lincoln Memorial Academy until 7/23. So according to your notes, you already hired him, and then you came in here with that little slip-flop show on the 23rd and said, oh, we have three candidates, and Ronnie King is one of them. But you already hired him, according to your documentation, on 7/16. I don't understand that. I believe that's a violation of sunshine law, correct? Ooh, y'all won't even look at me. Isn't that a violation of sunshine law? To hire someone and then say, oh, we need to pick a principal, but he was already picked? Or is it a typo, like the shut-off notice that you fraudulently admitted into evidence at the hearing? We have several systems in place now that check for errors in documentations. Your HR department not competent enough to do that? Ronnie King was hired once again, seven sixteen, July sixteenth, twenty nineteen, according to your documentation, but you didn't know anything about a principal, a new principal going to Lincoln Memorial Academy. Sunshine violation to me.
Ms. Phillips, before you go. Just a reminder, I know you're not criticizing Mr. King, you're criticizing the board, but again, if we could leave individuals' names out of public comment, I'd appreciate it. Just a, just a reminder, thank you. Appreciate it. Junior Salazar, are you here? Glenn, you're back up. Mr. Jivaleen.
I'll keep it short. Again, I just want to talk about the renewable energy policy. I send you guys stuff every week, cutting-edge stuff, software, policies, documentation for a simple renewable energy policy. I mean, you don't have to leave your desk to look at a building and say, you know what? Let's go check the bus depot and see what the angle of those roofs are. You type it in, and I offered to give you guys free lessons. I mean, it's out there. So, I think you should take advantage of the technology that's out there. So, I would encourage you to, to kick that up to the building department, whoever makes those decisions, to get on that software and at least have some common knowledge of how we can save some money. I keep going back to Orlando, I mean, what a cutting-edge school. The second thing is, is PeopleSoft, I was reading in the newspaper about that. Fight those guys, man. They, they shouldn't have got, they shouldn't have got paid half of what they did. So, I am behind this board to stick by your guns, don't pay them. That budget got way out of hand without any authorization, and I think you guys have good case law that you will prevail in this lawsuit. So, I would stick with your guns on that. That's about it. I'll keep it short, and I just, overhead projector somewhere, I'm going to keep coming back. Do we get one? It's not that hard. And I think it really would enhance the public that sits here, that takes time to come out here and spend their time and, and listen to our presentations. I've got a lot of information I could show you, but I'm like, I'm not going to start printing this stuff out. I'm not going to do it. It's just so easy, it's just so comfortable. So, please, please, overhead projector. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Mazor?
Good evening, teaching everyone of you. Uh, I'll be very short, I know time is a little short. We're here following protocol and being in, making sure that we're in a chain of command. We understand that there's nothing that's going to be accomplished here at this board. So, we just want to make sure that we entertain the commander with everything we'll go through. We want to further address the concerns about the, not accusation, but charges that was put up against our superintendent here, some of the things, the intention of distorting and misrepresenting facts concerning educational practice in the direct and indirect public expressions and submitting a fraudulent information on a document in connection with professional activities. As the young lady just said, when we was in Fort Lauderdale, they addressed that very well, and I think I said the first day as I stood up here that we will not go away. So, what we're saying here is the MCC, Manatee County Concerned System for Justice for Manatee County is asking that the superintendent be put on administrative leave with pay until a full investigation is determined by this district board and the citizen of Manatee County. The citizen of Manatee County will no longer accept or approve the leadership of this superintendent or ethics and, and favoritism with special employees has been, has stemmed a huge concern throughout this district. Again, we're asking for a complete and thorough investigation of all activities in the past five years. This is how you have determined a forensic audit. This investigation will involve the superintendent's attitude, professional decisions, leadership abilities. We, the Manatee County Concerned Citizens for Justice are asking that these actions be taken immediately and respond, given to the public by the next board meeting. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to get a new wardrobe. I've been down here so many times, Charlie, I think we're wearing the same stuff.
You and me both.
Yeah. I don't know, man, it's been a long road here, and I'm tired. You know, it's been a couple of years for me trying to give our kids a fair opportunity of an education that we think is appropriate. I almost feel it was kind of like a block, Black Wall Street type deal. You know, we built something really special for our kids, and somebody came in and just tore it down for no good reason other than just hate and spite and, and wickedness and for no other reason that we can think of would any community be handled as we have as such, and we're still here. You know, it's a shame. You know, we believe it's been sunshine violation here. We have clear-cut evidence of another case of fraud by Ms. Saunders. I mean, you can't, you just can't get around it. Everybody sees it, you're under heavy investigation, and you come in here and there's no pause. There's no slowing down to like, hey, maybe we need to just pump the brakes and stop and like, think about what we're doing, there's been nothing. We get the gentleman come down here and start lying from day one when you say, I'm not helping you at all, Dave, but said the man tried to run over you in the parking lot, and you better be glad you didn't have your gun, man, you're on the school board. You know, you, you said on ABC Seven that you, it's okay to bully kids, long as they're new kids, and you got to teach them who's in charge. You said that on television, and, and you want to challenge me on it? Shut your mouth, man, you talk too much. You know, we're sick of you. We told you, we don't like your kind here, brother. I got every right to say, I'm four generations deep here, brother. You, you, you're tumbleweed blowing through here. We're going to run you out of here, man. You have, you have corrupted this process, man. In broad daylight in front of everybody, we, we won't have it any longer, man. You're, you're done here. Done here. You tried to skate out of here two times on a job, no commitment to the community that just voted you in, man. You're nothing here. Nothing. But big blow bag and nothing else, and a big liar. We, we've got you in so many lies, man. When this thing collapses, man, you're not going to know nothing but ethics complaints, and those aren't threats, those are promises. And you too, Mr. Minor, I don't think I forgot about you. That watchdog minor, man, you had your chance, you bowed for that seat for six years, calling me grovelling to help you get that seated, when you had a chance to stand up like a man, you did nothing. You didn't stand up for anybody but yourself. And the three of you, you're in trouble. Ms. Saunders, you're in trouble. I told you on December the fourth of twenty eighteen, girl, go talk to your family and get out of here, because we, you will be ruined here. And guess what? You're ruined.
I'm sure that concludes public comment.
Okay, we're on to workshop item requests. Are there any workshop item requests? You-
Oh, we do? I don't have anybody else on my screen. Oh, Starlo coming up, I'm sorry.
Greetings, I'm Starlo Galetta. I've been a teacher in our district. This is my sixteenth year, counting on that longevity. And I worked as four years as a paraprofessional and as a substitute teacher. Before that, I was a student in Manatee County, and before that, I was born just across the street. So, I believe that I also qualify as a citizen. For many years, I've spoken before this board, seventeen in fact this month. I came the very first time because I was watching the board meetings on TV for many years, because it was, I'm a bit of a nerd. And, and there was a really, really explosive meeting, the first meeting in that January over redistricting. And, and many parents came before this podium, and they said they did not want their children going to school with those children, and nobody spoke for those children. I came in the next meeting, and I compared the atmosphere to a nineteen fifty-four's Kansas courtroom by the way that the community was trying to keep our communities separated. Over the years, I've continued to come and speak in a positive voice, because that's what our community needs, and that's what our students need, and that's what our students need to be able to emulate when they get to older and they become the change-makers. I brought students before the board all the way till about five years ago, six years ago, and it was hard explaining to elementary school children why grown-ups were not acting in the way that I told them you were supposed to act in a public place. And it became a little distressing, because they had questions for me that I could not answer, and so I stopped coming. And at the time, there were only four of us that were regulars down here, one of them's on the board, one has passed, Mrs. Scott, and Mr. Raphael, and who fought for schools in Central Bradenton. We may have been the only people that cared what was going on in this room with those board members in, in our community. I, I, I come tonight because I, I did hear through, through word that public comments that was being considered possibly removing public comments from the meeting. And after I've been sitting here tonight, I can see that, that we have work to do with communication. And I was insulted here tonight as a teacher, and, and I, I was kind of shocked, I'm in my chair, I've sat in that chair for seventeen years. Well, it's changed, but it's my chair. I am a high school dropout. I didn't go back to college till I was twenty years old. And at that time, when I, I graduated with my AA, I was served two terms as the president of the student government. I had spoken before the state legislature, the House of Representatives, as an eighteen-year-old, where I had helped co-author a bill protecting children and corpus delecti. And so, I'm, I am not an unruly member before this, this podium, however, I've been teaching children since I could talk. And, and I, I would never allow them to be able to create a sign with misspellings, because I'm a teacher, and that's what I do, and that's what all the teachers in Manatee County do. I'll be bringing students before this board a month from today or tomorrow, and they will be presenting their work with national geographic and international organization, and I hope that they find a happy environment to speak to. Thank you.
Thank you, Starlo. That's it, and I apologize for skipping her. That's it, Madam Chair.
It wasn't on my list either, so, um, I'm, thank you for being here. Workshop item requests. I don't know if I heard any.
Madam Chair, I, um, I, this is not a workshop request, but I, this might be a good time to say it, I would like to request a shade meeting. I'd really like to request two separate ones, one related to cyber and one related to LMA. I don't know, I don't think we can do them together in the same shade session, obviously that's different attorneys.
We could schedule it according, like, one one hour, one the next hour, and have a proper attorneys representing in there if need be.
Okay.
So, that's my request, please.
Okay. I might request that you contact our attorney perhaps to set up that.
I'll make sure the attorneys in those cases know that. We'll discuss it with them and let you know.
Okay, Madam Chair, F M A?
Yes.
Is it the preference of the board to hold those shade meetings on a board meeting day? I just want to give Mr. Die some direction on whether you contact those attorneys about some dates to look for.
I guess it depends on the length and when they would be. If we were able to do one on January twenty-eighth, I know we only have one topic for the workshop, so perhaps we could do that first and then do that. But I don't really know what your, what the meeting would be, other than those two topics, and you really can't tell me. So, that's why I was saying, maybe you could talk to him to determine what would be discussed and time and all those things, because we really can't have that, sunshine, sunshine was fun, you know?
No, but I can say generally that I don't think they will take long. In both cases, I would, I have an idea for both that I would like to bring to the board and the attorneys. So, I don't foresee either one of them taking more than a half hour.
Okay, so then I guess I would ask if the superintendent and Mr. Die could contact those attorneys, and perhaps before the January twenty-eighth workshop, we start that at three and then do the one topic that we do have for the workshop on the twenty-eighth. That way, we're not, everybody's not coming in more than once, and I know those people that are going to be in and out of town because of session. I'm trying to be respectful of everybody's time.
Thank you.
Are there any other workshop items? Dr. Hopez?
Thank you. It's been, and it's probably been over a year since the board was updated on our IT security. And I know the IT department has been working diligently and implementing a number of security factors and things like that. Maybe when we're having these, we could get an update, but in an executive session on where we are with IT security, and they've done some good work, and I'd, I'd like to get updated. I think the board would appreciate being updated on, on everything that's going on with regards to protecting our data.
Okay. And then just to add that, we will have a workshop on Friday. That's a future workshop, but since it's winter workshops, and the workshop on Friday really will discuss solar-
Roof angles?
Construction, capital planning, and Palmetto High. So, all of that will be encompassed in that one workshop. And then there will be a workshop on the twenty-eighth. I know we were kind of hoping not to have one on the twenty-eighth, but we're, we need to approve the calendar, the next school year's calendar. We haven't approved that. We usually do it two years at a time. So, that's going to be presented to us so that it can go out to public on the twenty-eighth. I just want to put that out there, under workshops. Yes, Reverend Golden?
Madam Chair? I received communication about a cultural competence committee- where we were invited to come to a presentation that was going to be made, I believe, over this coming weekend.
It's actually, it's actually February first, I believe.
Okay.
It's the Dr. Jefferson event?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the first.
First and foremost, I think that that subject matter is something that will sooner or later come before us. And rather than have some of us there for the volunteer presentation, I would like to incorporate that presentation into a workshop, that we would have a formal presentation to the board, not just to some of us who may or may not be able to be there. And I have had some dialogue about either doing it at the workshop on the twenty-eighth. At the time, I thought it was three o'clock for our workshop, and I would like to know whether there's any appetite to maybe start at two o'clock to give this presentation an opportunity, or on the eleventh workshop in accompanying our board meeting, which I don't think has any agenda set yet. We have the workshop, I don't know whether there's anything set. So, I'd, I'd, I'd like to send that word out from this board that we are interested as a board in having a presentation with respect to that either on the twenty-eighth, and I know we just set this thirty-minute shade meeting in there, but either on the twenty-eighth or on the eleventh of February to, to discuss the, and I'm going to generally say, as I understand it, there was at one time a cultural competence committee that was under the auspices of the superintendent at that time, and that that committee existed as a consequence of an agreement between the then superintendent and that board and the NAACP, I think it was executed by Mr. Jones, on behalf of the community at large, because the superintendent under that agreement had the power to appoint all of those members. So, I think we just need to have a dialogue about whether we want to continue with that, start a new embellish, however that we want to do it. And I don't want to do that in an informal setting where all of us can't participate in the dialogue and in the conversation because of the sunshine law. Yes?
I am supportive of doing that, but I would actually prefer that we do it after February first, if you are okay with that, I mean, if the board is okay with that, because I do plan to go to that presentation, and I think anybody that can go to that would probably add to the conversations that we're going to have at the workshop.
That's fine.
But I, I support you, I, I support that.
I want to get us into a formal setting.
I get it. Yeah, it's so tough.
Because we can't make any decisions there at the presentation, we can't-
Can't really talk about it.
Really respond.
Right.
And so, I don't want it to be perceived as disrespectful or non-responsive. I want to officially say now, so that when we do go, those of us who will go, we will go knowing that we are coming back.
Talk about it.
That's right. So, that's why I'm asking that this be put on the workshop agenda for the eleventh of February, which will be the very next meeting after this encounter.
I think that's a great idea.
All right.
Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thanks, Gina. Yeah, I concur with Reverend Golden, and I just want to suggest that perhaps there's now at least going to be three of us at the presentation at St. Paul's on February first. So, Kathy, perhaps we should public notice that February first event, because as Reverend Golden- because as Reverend Golden said, it would be nice if we could speak freely, um, not only on February eleventh, but on that Saturday morning as well. So I can, oh, you've got the info. You have the flyer. So.
Well, and that's, that's.
How the rest of the board feels about that.
Okay, and that's precisely what I'm trying to avoid, because if we notice it and it becomes a formal meeting and there are three of us there, I think that puts the two of us who won't be there, the one of us who won't be there at a disadvantage, because you would then be speaking officially as a board. And that's, I don't want that confusion. I don't want us to buy into making a bad situation worse. Don't have any problem attending and being there, but I don't want it to be misconstrued that the board is there. And if you notice it and there's a meeting notice that goes out, the board will be there, as opposed to Board Member Kennedy, Board Member Hope's, and Board Member Messenger, and Board Member Golden, Board Member Minor, being their individual, they're being able to speak or to listen. So you, you, you give up some, you get some. That's the thing I don't, don't want to get into.
I see both sides of that. Um, how about we ask the attorney?
Yes.
As always.
Uh, I would, it'd be unusual to notice that, um, as a public meeting. Uh, I would, I would rather you attend and not get into discussion. But bring it, bring the discussion back to the board meeting.
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Um, I, I appreciate that from both of you. Um, I will defer to the two attorneys. Would it be appropriate, I know it would be allowed, but if we had one of us, say Reverend Golden, who was, because we cannot communicate or discuss these issues amongst ourselves outside of a meeting, but we could potentially designate one school board member at that February first event as even informally, this person, we have two observers here from the school board, and we have one person who can address the audience. Because Reverend Golden, in my, like, it's going to be, to me, the people in attendance are not going to understand why the three of us are there, but we're not saying anything. We're not participating. And yes, that will be made clear on February eleventh, but that's just what I'm, that awkwardness is all I'm trying to avoid.
You know what?
But I defer to you both.
No, there's no decision. Man, you don't have to defer to her, but he's the only one to get paid to be the attorney. All right? But what I will suggest is since the chair has already acknowledged that she is going to go, that she be designated, uh, for that purpose that you just described.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah. She is the chair, you see. And I'm not trying to put you on, see, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you see, we have too much, I think somebody said it earlier, we have too much talking and not enough listening. And then we have a lot of talking at cross purposes. And so by the time we get here on the eleventh, what we're going to hear is not what really was said, but what we thought we heard. And, uh, that, that's just not fair. That's not fair to anybody. If, if we're going to bring clarity, but in an effort to be obliging, you've already, you're the one that I've heard say that you're going to be there. You're our chair. So, uh, if you would accept that, then I'm done.
I typically don't feel very comfortable speaking on behalf of the entire board, but I would be happy to pass along that we are going to discuss it on the eleventh, because I think that that is the most important message we need to send, is that we are here to learn. We are here to listen. And then we will have our own discussions about it, because I think, to me, that is the purpose.
I agree.
So that I would be happy to say.
That's fine.
Mr. Minor.
Thank you. I, I concur with the, these, the comments of our chair. Thank you. I think that's the safest, best way, uh, for our proceeding, you know, for the community proceeding. It's a very touchy situation when there's more than one board member and there's discussion. Uh, it makes us ripe for a lawsuit, and we don't need any more lawsuits. We have, uh, um, we, we have to be very careful of that. If we send out notices and we're going to have a, a, a meeting, then we're going to get into all sorts of requirements that, of a board meeting, of handicap is accessible and all of that stuff. Um, then we're going to have our, our staff there? No. Uh, it's, I don't think we have a special meeting there. I think that it is a place where I'd like to be and learn, but in terms of speaking out, um, about it, not more than one person would speak, and that would be the chair. And, uh, I think, you know, her approach to it, that it's there for us to learn and then come back and, and in a meeting, open meeting like this, you know, to discuss, uh, what we have. Our, our, each of us has our take on that and where we can go from there. I think that's what the chair suggests is the best avenue. Thank you.
All right. That was a good conversation about workshop item requests. Uh, legal update.
Uh, I don't have anything this evening.
Instructional update.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We've gotten off to a great start as we've returned for the second half of our school year. First of all, um, a professional learning session occurred on January sixth for all instructional, as well as non-instructional staff members prior to the return of students on January seventh. So there were lots of opportunities to enhance professional growth and development. This past weekend, the, um, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, um, held two sessions, one Friday evening focusing on middle school and then all day Saturday focusing on high school accomplishments. We had five middle schools in attendance, and that is the largest growing, um, group of FBLA students um, in our region. So congratulations to Brayden River Middle School, Lee, Nolan, King, and Sugg that all participated Friday evening. And then, oh, excuse me, also Hale and Mona Jane. I apologize. So that's seven. Also, seven high schools on Saturday throughout the day, competition as well as awards. Bay Shore, Lakewood Ranch, Brayden River, Palmetto, Parish Community, and Southeast High Schools. So it's nice to see so many of our students involved, even on weekends, with their community involvement. So we're looking forward to the remainder of the school year and beginning to plan for twenty twenty twenty-one.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Operations update.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four items. The first one is the Manatee County Fair. Just want to do a shout-out. Todd Henson is our fair representative. You'll see him at the fair with his red coat on, but I do want to note the FFA events are going on throughout the entire fair, arts and crafts. All this information is at the manatee countyfair.com website. Uh, we want you to come out and support our community. Uh, number two, the Florida Department of Agriculture Award. So the Food and Nutrition Services, uh, received an award entitled Summer Trailblazer Award. If you remember, uh, that was for their partnership with PepsiCo and Tropicana, the Student Wellness Fair at Lincoln Park. And so it recognizes, uh, individuals that have a new approach to meals served. So this was something new for us, and we received that award, uh, from the Department of Agriculture. So congratulations to Regina Toma. She's our Director of Food, uh, and Nutrition Services. Number three, uh, we're hosting a Manatee County, uh, school support, uh, and district support job fair. It's going to be Thursday, January twenty-third at the Wakeland Center. It'll be from nine to one. So we're going to have, uh, jobs available for bus drivers. And a reminder that we did raise the rate, the starting rate for fifteen oh two, fifteen dollars and two cents for the bus driver's starting rate, and food service workers, which has now been raised to twelve fifty-five an hour. In addition, they receive attendance, uh, bonuses as well, financial bonuses. Uh, and we're going to have custodians, mechanical services, building and maintenance, uh, and ground maintenance all there as well. So, again, that's Thursday, January twenty-third. And number four, just some interesting statistics, talking about the technology group here, uh, just some quick facts. So just in a one-month snapshot, we had, uh, three thousand three hundred wireless access points installed. Uh, we've had over a hundred thousand and a hundred and nine thousand different devices have connected to our, uh, district and schools network. Our district averages over eighteen thousand calls per month, and that does not even include the calls from school to the district. Those are just outside calls. What's interesting, since we went live with our new My M Y S D M C login, we've had one million, you imagine, one million student and staff logins the first thirty days, and that includes the holiday break. A million logins. Uh, the district averages over four point five million, uh, emails sent and received every month. Four point five million. And we block over two hundred thousand spam emails every week from users' inboxes. We've installed over six thousand, uh, active phones installed. And our top five applications used daily, of course, are Focus, iReady, Schoology, Office three sixty-five, and Reading Plus. So those are just some examples of the operations department working hard to support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Well, I'm not sure, um, that all the board members. I know that two were in attendance yesterday, but we had a big buzz at Samoset and Palm View regarding our partnership with United Way in our grade level reading initiative. Uh, it was very positive to see the support of the community and all the actions that everyone is taking to try to ensure that all of our students are reading on grade level by the time third grade approaches. In addition, I'm not sure that all of you are aware of the donation and the partnership that Harvest United Methodist Church has with Samoset. But, uh, Christmas Eve, they asked for a donation and was able to raise twenty-one thousand dollars that went, uh, specifically for a food bank, clothes, and any other support items that students needed to ensure that they, when they came to school, they were ready and prepared. So it's really those wraparound services beyond the student day. But what an amazing partnership. They've been working with the school for the last six years, but, uh, that donation was pretty powerful and going a long ways. Uh, in addition, uh, of course, there was a, a big rally yesterday for funding education and our teachers. Uh, it definitely looked like, uh, a lot of in- instructional personnel from all over the state were, was in attendance. I know, uh, Pat Barber was there sending us pictures and keeping us abreast. Um, it does appear that there's going to be extra funding. We just don't know what the outcome looks like. But very hopeful that our teachers will see some end results of that. In addition, uh, we do, uh, have a table to be in attendance, uh, for the banquet of Martin Luther King events on Friday, January the seventeenth. I believe most of you have responded to be in attendance, so, uh, we're looking forward to that. There's a parade, of course, on Saturday and a wor- worship service on Sunday, the nineteenth at six P M. All of these sponsored by the Palmetto Youth Center. And, uh, our strategic plan update, uh, we are planning to have a workshop in the very near future. We don't have that date determined yet. We're waiting for the parent survey to come back. Um, and, uh, we will, we will be identifying the date so that Kevin Chapman can present that information to the board uh, in the very near future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Hope, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you. I just received notice that our, uh, nursing degree bill will be heard in the House on Thursday morning. So it went through the First Senate Committee, still be in the House, uh, which then puts it in a position that, uh, once it's gone through substantive committee, um, it can actually go to the floor. So that's good news. Uh, Happy New Year, everyone, and, uh, to our parents out there. We're moving towards the end of the school year, so let's keep the academic momentum moving forward. Thank you.
That was short and sweet. Reverend Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the honor of being present on yesterday in Tallahassee to rally with the, uh, Florida Education Association. I'm one of the founders of Pastors for Florida Children, and we were asked to participate, uh, in, in that activity. And, uh, as well, uh, I was one of the featured speakers. Uh, depending on whether you take Board Member Kennedy's version or my version, uh, either I introduced Al Sharpton or he introduced me, one or the other. But whichever way it went, uh, yesterday, uh, we made it clear that the governor's proposal, while asking for, um, raises for first-year teachers, uh, is a good start, but that's not where we want to end. What we're looking for are raises for everyone in public education across the state. From the classroom to the administrators, to the bus drivers, to the food service workers, to the maintenance people. And so they are going to be wrestling with that, I pray, over the next sixty days as to how to keep that part. But as was pointed out yesterday, uh, just increasing pay to teachers is not going to cure the real problems that we have with our public education system in Florida. And so we've adopted a three-part agenda that may or may not gain any traction this year, but it is the direction that we believe that, um, that the, uh, school systems ought to be going in. First and foremost, if you take one dollar of public money, uh, you need to be held accountable to public school standards. And that is, that is one of the cornerstones of improving the quality. We don't need to have any more arguments about charter schools, private schools, uh, whatever it is kind of school that you want to go to. If you take a dollar of public money, then you agree to, uh, adhere to the standards of public schools. Secondly, um, we really need to expand the definition of what a public school is. Right now, by statute, it's K through twelve, and, uh, the commitment that, uh, those whom I support and who are involved with wants that to include pre-K through twelve. We, we need to stop making a proprietary, uh, business out of educating our most vulnerable children. Uh, the, the ones who are needed most at the foundational level. A lot of these children come out with ACEs, acute, uh, childhood, uh, adverse childhood experiences, and by the time they get to the first grade, they don't want to read. So by the time they get to the third grade where they can't read, they are already on the prison, uh, school, uh, to prison pipeline. And so this becomes a very, very important part. And last but not least, with respect to the, my fellow school board members, um, we, uh, are not supportive in any way of term limits for school board members. Uh, that's, that's being, uh, proposed by one of our own legislators here in Manatee County. So I'm, I'm opposed to that, and, uh, that was brought up yesterday at the rally. We just, we're just not going to do that. Nor are we going to sit idly by and let them chip away at the local school board's authority, uh, to increase millage uh, for the purposes that we have, uh, already got the millage, uh, in Manatee County. It's already been helpful, helping with us, helping some, meet some of the needs that we have in this county. But this legislature is trying to div- to bring forth legislation that will limit the authority of local school boards to do that. So those, those are some of the things that we, uh, that we addressed at the rally, uh, in, uh, Tallahassee. I was, uh, I was just honored to be able to speak, uh, not only, um, on my behalf, but I hope on behalf of the general sentiment of the, um, of, um, of the board and of the people in Manatee County whom, whom, whom I've been elected to represent. So I thank you for the opportunity to make this report, and, uh, uh, these next sixty days are going to be very interesting.
Thank you. Mr. Minor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, I, I thank, um, Board Member Golden and, uh, Vice Chair Kennedy, uh, for being up in Tallahassee. And I, um, I had wanted to be there. I, for personal reasons, I couldn't be there. But, um, it wasn't just the request of the governor that I not be there, but, uh, or others, but I just couldn't be there. And, um, I, I'd like to, um, you know, praise the, the comments of Board Member Golden about, um, if it's public money, you know, s- schools should meet public school standards and requirements. Um, I felt that way, um, with respect to any money that we authorize to private schools or, or anyone else. It meets the requirements of, uh, the, the public schools. It's part of the thrill of, of being a public official is people say all sorts of things about you. And, um, some of them are flattering and untrue. Some of them are not flattering and untrue. I think the, uh, knowing the facts is, is really important. And, uh, Starlo Galetta, being one of our speakers here, um, I won't say how many years that she goes back with respect to participating in school board meetings, but it's at least twenty years, maybe twenty-five years. And, um, she mentioned, uh, some old guard, Raphael Allen, who's a, I consider a dear friend, lives over in Palmetto. And, uh, Bernice Smith, Colonel Smith, who is. And Bernice Smith, Colonel Smith, who's retired from the Army as a nurse. And Starlo and I were kind of the early advocates that we have in this wonderful school, the elementary school, you know, Rogers Gardens, and trying to get a, a school that was more in the community so there wouldn't be so much, you know, busing. I mentioned that, and we heard some early remarks, you know, that Minor never did anything, and you, you can believe that, and I guess that's how you evaluate it, but we don't need that. And I think that people who've known me and have been in this community know how false, you know, statements like that are, that I am proud to have been, you know, Children's Advocate of the Year, you know, by one of our black, you know, sorority groups, and for advocating for, you know, scholarships for black folks. And, you know, that's, you know, those who get up and say, you know, Minor's a racist or something like that, and there's no reason for what we did of LMA, are just not sensitive to the fact of the concern that not only I, but many others had of the failure to use mon- money properly for white kids, black kids, and all at LMA. And unfortunately, we had to take actions. And then call us whatever names and deprecate, you know, what we've done in the community, but I don't think there's any board member here who doesn't have the best interest of all students, black, white, brown, or whatever, and what actions we take are directed to that. Suggestions otherwise based upon a claim brexism or not being concerned, just are not based on fact. There was a mention that I was wearing an NRA button. Now, I, that's a new one. I, I, the, when I was in church camp once, I, I got-
Sorry, I'm going to stop you. The policy that I read this morning, this, beginning of this meeting requested that all conversations be kept at a quiet minimum. If there's a conversation that you need to complete, you can step outside and then come back when it's done. Whomever is having the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you need to have a conversation, I ask that you step outside and then you can come back when you're done. It is Mr. Minor's time to talk. Thank you. Thank you. If you need to have a conversation, you're welcome to leave and then come right back. This is Mr. Minor's time to talk now. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Minor, please continue.
Well, I was talking about the statement made earlier that I was seen wearing an NRA button. I think that was what it said. They didn't say what NRA stand for. I usually associate it with National Rifle Association. When I was in church camp, one of the things that I, I went to rifle practice, and I was okay. I was actually pretty good, and I got some, you know, award from the NRA. I don't think I ever got any button. I don't think I've ever worn any button in my life with NRA, and whoever claims, you know, that I was, you know, had it on me is misinformed, to put it, you know, in the kindest way possible. But those things get said about us, you know, false information to try to put us in bad light, and that goes with the territory. I wish it didn't happen. I wish we would deal with truth, honesty about what people do and don't do, but that goes with the territory. I, I'm very proud of our MEA and what they have done to, to help make our community better, you know, and putting together, you know, buses to go up to Tallahassee. I said it before, I will continue to say it, you know, if you're patriotic and you believe in a Republican form of government, the small r, you know, as Ben Franklin was talking about, we have to have an educated citizenry. And you, you're not being patriotic if you don't think it's important to support, you know, public education. And I think that this demonstration by MEA, it's not selfish, it's patriotic, and I think they deserve a lot of applause, you know, for what they did to bring attention to the need for more support from our legislature, you know, for public education. So, thank you, MEA, for what's going on. Thank you for the board members that could be there, and we're making this community better, we're making our state better by bringing to the attention that it isn't serving our country, you know, to, you know, give tax breaks, you know, to corporations who may just coincidentally be those who are, you know, spending tens of millions of dollars to PACs and taking it away from some money for public education. So thank you very much.
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Minor. I, I think the confusion might be your Marine Corps pin, but anyway.
I'm proud to be a Marine.
I, I know you are, and that's why I wanted to, that's just a thought I had. It's possible, that's, that's the confusion. Two items, two events coming up, and then I'd like to just address quickly two things from tonight's agenda. First is, this is MLK banquet Friday night, MLK weekend, MLK parade in Palmetto. So a reminder, I want to thank the superintendent for her generosity in securing a table for all of us so that we can be there en masse, hopefully. And then the parade starts at noon on Saturday and leaves from the Lincoln campus. So I will be there Friday night. Unfortunately, I won't be there at the parade on Saturday, but just want to get that out to everybody that might be within earshot. Really quickly, I would just wanted to address the, the, the sub credentialing issue that's been brought up. This is a tough one, and Liv and Mrs. Middel, I know you're both very strong public education advocates, and I get exactly where you're coming from, but I thought Starlo came up and made a good point, too, that a person who does not yet hold a bachelor's degree can still have some skills. And another factor that weighs on this is that our sub shortage is affecting the work that our full-time teachers can, are getting done because they have to cover, they have to cover when there is a, a sub shortage. Liv, you, you, you bring up a good point. If we were to raise teacher pay, supply and demand kicks in, and we might be able to get some qualified college graduates. I think that's a, I think that's a good argument. We have discussed in the past about subpay and if we can bolster it and what that would do for us. We have found during those presentations from HR that we are, except for Sarasota, we are the highest-paying district for substitutes in our area. So we are competitive, I would say, but you raised a good point that if we were to put some resources, resources toward that, we may get more subs, but we have to deal with this crisis and this shortage now. That's how I feel about it, and that's why I supported it. The other item I wanted to touch on, and this goes back to Reverend Golden's comments about slowly but surely local control being taken away, not just from school boards, but from local governments. The legislature always seems to find a couple different ways session to, to chip away at it, and those comments led me to think about Best and Brightest, which we approved tonight. And the superintendent and I talked about these Best and Brightest awards when we had our board briefing before this agenda was published, and I had a couple questions for her, because I've had teachers come to me, obviously, but really, there is no wiggle room in these Best and Brightest awards. This school board has no control over Best and Brightest awards. Whatever the legislature says, goes, and it's just another one of those examples where there's a lot of conversation about local control, but there's not a lot of walking the walk when it comes to that issue come from, from Tallahassee. So it's, it's, as a local board member, it's, it's very frustrating, and I do appreciate Reverend Golden going up to Tallahassee yesterday. Mr. Minor, I was not in Tallahassee. I was just appreciating Reverend Golden for his, for his advocacy in making the trip, but I wanted to make that really clear. So, but it was a good turnout. There were superintendents across the state that supported their employees going there. We were one of them, and it was quite a turnout, as has been mentioned in public comment. Is there more that we can do as a local board? I'm a little bit of a pessimist, and I think the legislature as it stands now doesn't really care what local school boards think. They-
Mrs. Rhodes?
Mrs. Rhodes, that's a $5 fine to the Manatee Education Foundation.
I can't hear the bell.
And maybe it's good you cut me off, but, but anyways, but I think for those of us who support public education, we need to start looking at the people we are sending to Tallahassee, and we will be much more effective through the electoral route than we will through, through advocating in front of a group of people who have shown historically they're not listening to us anyway. So, soapbox, step down, Charlie. Okay, I'm done. Thank you, Gina. And thank you, board colleagues.
Well, I'm glad you touched on the sub that was on one of my notes, too, just to really reiterate that that's not for long-term subs. That was one of my questions, you know, when somebody's out on maternity leave and somebody's gone for weeks and weeks, that is the, a different job description than what was changed tonight, and I really wanted to make that clear. I really wanted to talk about what happened yesterday with United Way and the big plan, and how momentous that is. When I go and talk to community members, that's one of the things that I can really reiterate how I think our community understands. It takes the entire community. I've heard it from the county administrator. I've heard it from county commissioners. I've heard it from the United Way. I've heard it from lots of different organizations. It, it takes everybody. It takes everybody working together forward in one single way, and, and that was what was so special about yesterday with United Way, going and donating to schools to help further that progress so that we can make a difference and affect our third-grade reading, because that, that's huge, especially in our Title I schools. The disparity between a traditional school and our Title I schools and their reading levels in third grade, that, that shouldn't, and we've, I think we've narrowed that gap, but that gap should not exist. So I, I really appreciate everyone moving forward in a singular way to make that happen. And I watched your speech. I don't, you like turned it on. I don't know, like, I've never seen that person before. It was wonderful. You did a-
You were there?
No, no, oh, I watched it online.
Oh.
You're everywhere.
Okay.
But you, you did a fabulous job, and I think you represented Manatee County very well. And finally, I think there's a lot of us that will be visiting Tallahassee because we get on our soapboxes, I'm going to get on my soapbox there with our legislators, because if nothing else, to show them how their decisions repercussions in our classrooms, I think, is the biggest gift, and I'm going to call it a gift, that we can give them. I truly believe that, because I don't think there is a understanding of how that, how, what they're creating, what it looks like in our classrooms. And if we're not reiterating that in those meetings with them, I don't know how they will achieve that, you know? So with that, I know there's a lot of other board members that are hoping to go and speak with legislators, and the superintendent's going to be there, too, and so that, we got to use our voices to do that, and I think the teachers did that yesterday and other employees did that yesterday, and I love that. And with that-
Gina, can I say one more thing?
Oh, sure. You have to have the last word.
No, I don't, but I, I left something out, which is very important. And speaking of the legislature, and Will, Will Robinson has been a good friend, our, one of our representatives in Tallahassee. Will has been a good friend of mine since I moved here, however many years ago, and Will's father passed away, and his service was this Saturday, and I want to thank Mr. Rio, who spoke at the service in a very moving way and very deeply about his friendship with, with Bill Robinson. And I never knew that at 18 years old, you were managing a sporting goods store, so that was, so I just wanted to mention Mr. Robinson, and also, as much as I complain about the legislature, I, like, like every constituent, we, we don't like the entire body, but we love the person that represents us. So I think Will is always accessible, and he is listening, so, I mean, I can always, I know I can always depend on him to listen. It's the whole body that I'm a little pessimistic about. So anyway, I meant to thank Mr. Rio for that earlier, and I just left it off, so thank you for letting me include that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And with that, if there's no further discussion, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
That's all. That's all.